President, Brian Mahan is absent. Pat Rocheski is absent. Porter Kowalski present.
For those who are able to stand, do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a virtual card reading. Mr. Courtney Perkles?
All right, perseverance. Perseverance is being said fast and persistent. You commit to your goals and overcome obstacles no matter how long it takes. When you persevere, you don't give up, you keep going. Like a strong ship in a storm, you don't become battered or blown off course, you just ride the waves.
Thank you, Courtney. Chad, were you able to stay till the end of the game? Did you make it to the end of the game?
No, they're still playing.
Darn it.
I got the kids, they're doing the updates, so.
Okay, good. Don't be afraid to make an announcement when it's. Please do, yep. For the education guidelines, with an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest communications around district priorities. We work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes academics, the arts, and athletics. And just a note, athletics, our girls softball team is right now playing a regional softball game. They've had a fantastic season, we really want to give credit to their coach.
Bailey?
Bailey Rocheski, assistant coach, best shape bar, and.
Tim Rocheski.
Tim Rocheski as well. And, you know, they've had outstanding season and hopefully will continue play. They're at the bottom of the seventh right now and they're tied, bottom of the seventh, we're waiting for an update. So, we gotta really, really put a big shout out to them. Public comments, do we have any public comments at this time? Okay. CWSA update, CWSA had a meeting last night, I apologize for not being able to attend, but I'm hopeful that you had a productive meeting.
I did, I did. Not a whole lot to say, just wrapping up the end of the year. We'd like to invite you all again, Thursday is our very last showcase for the year from five until six at the middle school. A great way to come in to see what our school is all about and what the kids have been doing, so they're showcasing their projects. I will be there, hopefully grabbing some parents and talking about the governance council and maybe gathering some more interest for it. But that's about what we're doing, school year has gone really well, they're having another field trip on the fourth. They're going to Milwaukee to Discovery World, so that'll be fun for the kids. Just wrapping up the end of the year, and so showcase night Thursday.
Are they selling so at the showcase night, or did I see them out?
I don't think so, they did the flower sale on Saturday.
Okay.
And they were selling it there and did really well.
Awesome.
So, they sold out of all their plants that they planted with Julia Shutter, so.
So they did a partnership, can you tell a little bit more about that? I saw that on Facebook or don't you know a whole lot about it?
Um, I don't know a whole lot about it, I know they've done it a couple of years running now. So Julia Shutter from Shutter's Greenhouse, who works with the kids, comes in and talks to them about planting. So they actually go out to the greenhouse with her and I know they start all the seeds for all the plants that they're gonna sell.
Awesome.
I bought some last year, he wasn't there this year, but, so they seem to have sold out and did pretty well. So it was a good fundraiser for us.
And just for those of you who may not be aware, the CWSA Central Wisconsin STEM Academy located at Alexander Middle School, serving grades.
Six through eight.
Six through eight, provides for a project-based learning environment. And you, as a member of the governance council, CWSA is actually a, what was it?
It's that instrumentality.
Instrumentality of the district. And the governance council in and of itself controls that school. And you are kind enough to come to us on a monthly basis and kind of give us an update. And we certainly appreciate your service on the governance council and encourage others that are interested in contributing to the local community to serve in that public capacity. So, you know, if you're interested, please feel free to contact, well, you can look at the website for the Alexander Middle School and look up CWSA.
Right, yep.
And, you know, appropriate contact information is in there if you're interested. But thank you very much for your service and for your time tonight.
Thank you.
All right, Wise Academy update, are we gonna?
No update.
No update, very good. Overarching results, each month, each month, we present a little bit overarching result, which is?
Empowering all students to succeed in a global community.
Thank you, Terry. And tonight, we're going to be having a CTE presentation.
Yes, so.
Mister, I'd like to turn the floor over to.
Mrs. Coulter and Mr. Dorhorse.
And Mr. Dorhorse. And if I.
You can come right up here, Mrs. Dorhorse. Sit by you. Mrs. Coulter.
Yep. We want to thank you both for being here tonight, Mr. Dorhorse and Megan, thank you.
Yeah, hey, thanks for inviting us. Chad, if you wanna just get started and talk a little bit about what's going on in CTE and the few celebrations we have from this year.
First, may I just, do you know Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Schmidt is a former board member, he was away for three years, he was re-elected this year.
Away for one year.
Away for one year, ah, you got me. And he's actually had, Mark, Mark the most experience as a board member amongst all of us at this time. And so his presence is very much welcome. Mr. Dorhorse joined us this last year in the I-Industrial Technology Department. And he has a very diverse background, and I think, Dave, Mr. Schmidt has always been interested in this and I think you'll find it interesting. And I encourage you to visit Mr. Dorhorse's classroom and feel some of the energy down there. So with that.
Thank you. Some of the things I've been doing is trying to get more community involvement with my tech ed program. And so I reached out to, one thing was Airgas and A&amp;B Process Systems. So I talked to A&amp;B Process Systems, they sent me to Airgas, and we ended up getting a fifteen thousand dollar sponsorship where they bought us new, three new welders, grinders, welded helmets, shields, masks, everything. In the hopes of what we wanna do is kind of try to build some of the community and the kids. Well, my plan is to try to get some of the kids actually help teach some of the community members how to weld.
Cool.
So, we got the Airgas, we were one of thirteen schools in the nation that actually got the sponsorship. I believe we were the only rural school that got the sponsorship. So we got that.
We want to thank Airgas again for that.
Yeah, that's.
That's huge, and thank you for reaching out to them, you know, having the contacts and the time to go out there and reach them. But, yeah, we recognize them in the past and I'm more than willing to recognize them again.
Yeah, well, I can't thank Airgas and Mark Snyder over at A&amp;B, it's Mark Snyder at A&amp;B Process Systems and then Dale Fungel at Airgas. It's, it really works well when everybody can come together, when you're working on that same common goal. And another thing that we're actually doing for the tech ed program is we're building, I don't know if you knew this yet, we're building a doghouse for the canine unit for Officer Andrew Berger. So, it's kind of cool because Andrew and officers, Brian Mahan, come in, you know, so you got a couple of police officers in there and we're talking about the, you know, the doghouse and stuff, so.
I heard this doghouse has a loft in it and kind of.
It doesn't have a loft yet, but it's got a partition, so it's gonna block the wind. But, I mean, that dog, well, it's not like your normal house dog.
Yeah.
You know, it's gonna be protecting people, it's gonna be finding bad things, so.
One other thing that I'd like to recognize you for, and, you know, this kind of goes to empowering all students to succeed in a global environment. You invited all the trades to a, to a meeting early on in this school year. And I, you thank you for inviting all of us to that. And I think that was really an exciting time to see that whole group together. And they had, actually said that they hadn't really all been in one room together at one time before.
No, I, well, actually, myself and Megan, or Miss Coulter, we kind of set it up and then, yeah, I think it was, what, seventeen?
Seventeen union leaders?
Leaders between representatives and, you know, they might have been the president of the union or they all came together and what we're trying to, what I, what I like to do is try to save the school board some money. What I wanna do is, I want to, or what kind of our ideas, have the businesses help out with the schools paying for stuff. So they'd be able to, the unions be able to help us work on, say, a wall or something. And so once we got them all together, it's, it's going places now.
Right, and then, you know, I think there were some other opportunities where our students were able to travel to a hands-on program over.
Over to Appleton, or.
Over to Appleton and actually touch equipment and work with equipment.
Everything is hands-on, they got the client, well, they got two.
It was a really fun day, they did some welding.
Yeah.
Did you, did you do some too today?
I did some soldering.
Okay.
We didn't get any pictures of that.
I got them.
What? The kids got to do some masonry and stonework. They got to practice on a digital excavator, so they could, like, they had to rack up so many points and get a score, like, what they would get paid for that load. What were some of the things they did?
Well, they got to lay brick, so they actually got to physically, everything was so hands-on that they actually got to, they had the wheelbarrow there with concrete and they just laid brick. And they had the professionals sitting there working with them. And it's more of a, do you like this? If you like doing this, we wanna work with you. If not, that's okay, go see if you do wanna try some electrical stuff. And then, they got to weld, they got to torch. The one thing that was really loud in there was pounding nails.
Mm-hmm.
Or screws.
I had a little toolbox the kids made me.
Actually, and then, the electrical union actually donated, they came right before Christmas and donated about fifteen hundred dollars worth of tools to our program, Milwaukee cordless drills. Which I, so I reached out to them, his name was Guy LaPage. So, we've been reaching out, kind of trying to get more community members involved in the program than we're doing.
Chad spends a lot of time making connections with area businesses or representatives from different trade unions to not only get some donations from them, but also get some of their time donated within our, in our classrooms. So, somebody came in and taught some kids how to do some welding that was just a different instructor. So, the ones who are a little bit more serious about welding or a little bit more advanced got some, some technique from somebody who does it day in and day out as part of their job. So, we're getting a lot more people to come in and talk to the kids about what their future could look like in that trade and a lot more kids excited about the trades and knowing what are some options for their future. What route could they go, should they go? And not just talking about how much money they're gonna make hourly, but what their retirement plans can look like. So, we have a lot more kids thinking about health insurance and how much they're gonna make, but when they can retire and what kind of plan and who can offer what in a way that a lot of kids don't think about who are going off to a four-year institution yet. So, it's kind of exciting to hear them compare those things.
Just one thing, I just wanted to mention though that I was very proud of is when we got our new equipment and stuff and we started, we had A&amp;B Process Systems come down there, they come down and helped us show us how to TIG weld. The next day, I had students here that wanted to come in at five thirty in the morning to come TIG weld and practice and just.
Wow.
Show up and have fun. And A&amp;B Process Systems gave us all the metal, everything, and just said, here. It was, if we have the, if we have that stuff for them.
Really?
It's not faulty, man.
Awesome.
Congratulations, all right, congratulations.
When we have that stuff for them, them kids, man, they thrive, it's awesome. They really wanna, they really wanna keep going with it.
I think this is a really good topic for, you know, the overarching results and how we as a school district can empower all students to succeed. And this is, you know, I'm excited about not only what you've accomplished, but what is yet to come. So I really appreciate the time you took, Mr. Dorhorse and Mrs. Coulter, to present on this subject.
I've got a couple more updates just from the other CTE areas. Talked to Ms. Jackson and she had four YAs this year, youth apprenticeships this year. And two are graduating, and next year, we're looking to have between six and eight youth apprenticeships, with six already approved and we're looking at the possibility of two more. So we're looking at expanding our youth apprenticeship programs and looking to get more kids into trade youth apprenticeships. We have some kids who are really interested as freshmen and sophomores, who are thinking about doing it in their senior year. So I think that number will expand even more over the next couple of years. If you're at graduation, you can recognize the students who are YAs by the maroon honor cords that they will be wearing as part of their day of year too. So if you're, if you're thinking about who they are, you can see them at graduation. Mrs. Jackson and Mrs. Severs are working on their college career readiness report card, but that's always sort of a last minute, we need graduation data to get in there. So expect to see that or some version of that by next month. FBLA has two students advancing to nationals, so they are headed to San Antonio June twenty eighth through July third. HOSA has one member advancing to nationals in Orlando, and I'm accompanying her June eighteen through the twenty-third. Upcoming, we have Microsoft Office Specialist Testing, up to twenty students, we have licenses for twenty students to take that test. If they pass, this is an industry certification, so this is also a certification that qualifies for the money that we give out for the states for kids getting those certifications. And then, she did share with me, she was really excited, we have, I don't know how many students total, it'll show up in their report card, but we do have one student graduating this year with twenty-three college credits from mid-state already.
Twenty-three.
So he is almost halfway done with his program and having paid zero dollars for half of his, his degree already.
Wow.
So that is really exciting. Also, I have developed groundwork, and I'll bring it to you in the next month or two, for a new leadership certificate that I would like to offer our juniors and seniors. There's quite a bit involved in it, but kind of the basis is they need to develop ninety, or they need to, to prove ninety leadership hours between September, let's say September one, whenever the school year starts. And then, we're looking at cutting that off April thirtieth, so that we can present it either at scholarship and awards night or as part of the Braves Awards, but we wanna make it a big deal. We want to recognize our students who put in all of the extra time, either working or volunteering or being part of CTSOs. The students who, they may not be four-point-oh students, but who have really committed to doing excellent work in our school community. So, it is a DPI certificate and we're just expanding what that means and then putting a lot on it. So it'll come from DPI, sponsored by us, but it should be something that is pretty competitive for them to.
Nice.
To gain, and then something really nice for their resumes or college applications or scholarship applications, so.
Awesome.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
Congratulations to all of you for that work, dynamic program.
So any questions on CTE?
No, I just want to thank Chad for all of his hard work in getting all those sponsorships for all the materials for our tech ed department and stuff like that, so it's a lot of work, so congrats.
Thank you, it's actually kind of funky, and there's a lot of businesses that wanna help, it's just a matter of asking.
I'm excited to see where that goes with seventeen, the seventeen that you got together this year, where that goes down the road. I mean, we could probably spend more time talking about it, but we need to move on. But thank you guys for being here.
Yep, very much appreciated.
Have a great night.
Yep, have a good night, and we did get confirmation that the girls won, any, were you at the game? Okay, do we know who, how they, how they won? Home run?
I don't know, it just says, something along the lines of we won.
Okay. Details to be, I'll help you, thank you. Okay.
Thanks again, Megan, yeah.
Yep.
Megan, thank you, yep.
Mr. Brian Grill.
All right, first thing I want to update you on, I'm gonna go building by building, Bob, not gonna spend too much time, but I'm gonna send reports around twice a year. Remember why I talked to you earlier in the year about new school safety requirements? So, it's a requirement that we do two unannounced drills for emergency lockdown, and I have to report to the board the results of those drills within thirty days of them occurring. So I'm just gonna highlight some of the successes of the drills and some of the challenges that we ran through. So I'm gonna pass these around for you to read at your leisure. But, so the first building I'm gonna start with is Humke Elementary School. So, some of the successes that we ran into, when we did the drill, students actually knew what to do pretty well and teachers were able to go to their doors, implement the barricades, and students kind of knew the procedures. And we did it a little differently, that there was an outside intruder coming into the building, so they had to think differently, because usually when we do a drill, we start with the intruder inside the building. We also had students who were in the hallway who knew to go to the closest room possible. And for ones that were in the restroom, we actually had some kids know just stay there. An area we saw that we couldn't approve upon, so one thing, Steve Hersberg goes to all these drills with me, along with Josh Colo, and we looked at the PA system, is everything able to be heard? So there were a few areas, because we had our early childhood kids actually out on a recess time. So they heard it, but it was kind of muffled. So they're like, we have to check the PA system out on the playground, because what if it were to occur when kids were out at recess, they have to be able to hear it. And early childhood was able to hear the muffled sounds and that was just them. We're like, what would that be if all kids were out on the playground? So we just have to check our PA system on that. But, you know, they, based on what they heard, they responded appropriately, so. That was Humke. I'm also gonna go into next, the high school. So we ran the same scenario at all three buildings. The high school actually had a mix of students who are outside and inside. We actually found out that the PA system at the high school for outside was not working. So they could actually hear nothing outside. So we have to look into that and see what's going on there. But also, the academy still has its challenges, once they're in that back room and locked down, hearing the all-clear and things like that, they were not able to hear that message. But same thing, teachers knew what to do, the one thing we noticed, in a drill even with high school students, having them work through the drill completely. Because the ones that were in the library, they turned off the lights and closed the doors, but they stayed seated right where they were, so they were right in front of the windows. It's like, okay, no, go through the drill, where would you go, where would you hide? Do those practice things, so that way, you know, knock on wood, hoping nothing ever happens, but you would know what to do in that scenario. But a lot of good things, and then talking through students that didn't get into classroom in time, as they're in the hallway, you know, the principals, myself, Josh, and we also had some police officers there, stopping them and saying, okay, the door is already locked, this is your classroom, what do you do? And a lot of them were able to think through, well, I need to go here or go here. So that was things they knew, it's just in that practice in the moment, all right, go do it then. Don't just say, wait, we get to drill, but go where you're supposed to go, so. And then lastly, at Alexander Bell School. Everyone was in the building at the time, but one of the things we did observe that went well, a lot of the windows and things like that, same thing, were covered, people implemented barricades. The one thing with middle schoolers as a whole is just getting that quiet peace down, what, even when you're running drills. So, we had to follow up with some classrooms just to remind them, it's a drill, take it serious. Because there were some where the police were at the end of the hallway and they could hear the classrooms loud and clear of what was going on, and they were like, no, we need to practice this through. So Nathan did a great job and followed up with some of those students in classes just to talk with them about that. But then, to just continue to highlight, we noticed a area too where we were not able to hear the PA system and it was in the gym and in the cafeteria. So Steve, like I said, is aware of all those and he is following up, so. I kind of went through that quick for you guys, but any questions about the emergency lockdown drills?
One question with regards to the PA announcements. Do they have the ability to make, the appropriate personnel have the ability to make those PA announcements from any phone in the building, or do they have to go back to that central area?
So, you can't actually make PA announcements from any phone in our district. The one thing we're working on, because the school safety committee, because we created a district one as part of the new law and as part of our safety grant requirements. One of the things are safety, when we did our assessments that I presented to you in December, at Humke, it says right on the phone, how do you make a PA announcement so that way you can make it from any? The phones are capable, but not everyone knows how. On Humke, it says, we're on the phone, hit pound, and then here's the number to make that announcement. But we don't have that in the other buildings. So we're working on getting all phones labeled, so if something were to occur, people know how to do it.
From a management standpoint, that's something you really don't want older kids to know.
Yeah. So it's figuring out that one, yeah.
Little kids don't get it, so we're, that's what that is, so.
Just put rotary phones on and no kidding.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you very much for that update and your due diligence and following through on that.
One other thing I wanted to highlight too, so we have this. And then, on a different note, we applied for our Title VI grant for our Native American Education Grant and it's already approved and we were awarded money to continue that grant next year, so.
Awesome, very good, thank you very much. Thank you. Lynn, Safeway update, or would you like to move technology grab?
Actually, Safeway is here, so I would like for them to, yeah.
Whatever, whatever works best for your group.
Great, thank you.
Is that okay?
Yep. So Anne and Tracy are here and they're just gonna talk about how the year has been going. I can't see you guys.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Dave, you remember Tracy and Anne?
Hello.
You're welcome, guys.
I think the year's been going great. We've had, you know, great communication with the schools. We ran into a thing this spring where we're short drivers, happens every spring, every district. We have more extracurricular than we do normally, we have more athletic, you know, with all the makeups, we had a few snow days in there that caused a little bit of havoc with us, but overall, things have been going very well. The district invited us to an admin meeting recently, and I thought that was super beneficial. We got to speak to some of the building principals and the athletic directors and what we can do to work together to make it a little bit easier. And we have seen some changes and it's been fantastic. What our problem is, is all, a lot of the trips, I shouldn't say all, a lot of the trips tend to go out at three o'clock. Or three, well, three o'clock is fine, it's that three-thirty mark that would kind of hurts us, because that's when routes are out. And so, you know, when we get so many athletics and extracurricular all at one time, and our main goal is to cover our routes first, that makes it a little tricky for us. Now, if buses can be back by three o'clock, you know, extracurricular ones, that's fantastic, I can give you all the buses in the world. It's just when we have to try to, you know, cover everything. So what we've been working with is for the extracurricular, if they can be back by three, you can take as many buses as you want. And some have changed for us, which has really been helpful, they were supposed to come back at three-thirty. And some have changed for us, which has really been helpful, they were supposed to come back at three thirty, they changed their schedules to come back at three to really help us out, that's huge. And we'd love to give you as many as we can. We have had a shortage of drivers, it's not easy getting drivers anymore. Unemployment being at what it is, we have to be competitive, we're trying to be competitive. But there's a lot to becoming a bus driver, it's not like I can take any gentleman or lady off the street and put him behind a bus, I can't. I'd love to, but you have to have an impeccable driving record, you have a clear background check, you have to go through rigorous training, there's drug and alcohol testing, it's, there's a lot to it. And so you really have to wanna become a school bus driver. Not to mention, it's a little different driving empty than with sixty kids behind you or more. So not everybody has that demeanor. We work with them and we try, but it gets tricky, especially the end of the year, you get a little bit, a few more rambunctious little pumpkins, but all in all, it's been going really well, we're, we're trying to pull out all the stops this summer and hiring more and more drivers, we're trying. Even some fill-in drivers, if we can get them to come in and be fill-in drivers, we never know if that may lead to, you know what, this isn't as bad as I thought it was gonna be, I'll be a full-time driver. And that's what we're really hoping to find. But other than that, I think it's been going great, I look forward to next week where we can implement even more of this working together with the, with the principals and athletic directors and start times and end times, I think that'll be good, so.
And I think there was just a lack of communication and when you don't meet for so long, you just, you know, you kinda start doing your own thing and you don't really talk to anybody, so when we got everybody together, I mean, it was, you could just see the light bulbs going off in the room, so. It just, it was good, it was really good.
When you say when they can get back by three, what does that, they mean?
If, like if they take an extracurricular trip and they, let's say they leave at eight thirty-nine in the morning.
Okay.
Yeah, if they can be back by three o'clock, I can give you my whole fleet if you want it. But it's, when you come back after three, then I lose a route driver, so now I've gotta have two people, you know, one for the route, one that stays on the trip. And we, we lose people, some have injuries, some had, Anna had surgery, we've had one, their husband moved, so she had to move and it was kinda like, holy cow, all at one time, that's a lot to fulfill. And we just, it's not like you have ten extra drivers just sitting around, you know, people are working and busy and and it is a tough job because you have the AM and the PM. And yes, there's some trips in the middle or there's a noon route occasionally, but it's not like it's a full-time job. So it is tricky to find people, but we keep plugging away, so.
Well, and not only that, you certainly don't want buses just hanging out in the garage because they cost so much money.
No, no. Right, right.
And you know, we wanted to, you know, that, the driver shortage is something that, is something that we recognize as an issue for, for a lot of people that are in your type of business.
Oh, it's, it's every city, it's every state, it's everywhere.
Drivers wanted Safeway Bus Company.
We've been trying to help out as a district to, to.
No, I appreciate that, and that's what we're going off of, it's just, you know, we had, we, we do these job fairs and now it's kind of become a competition with laymen's, which, who can have the more fun booth? And we work really well with laymen's, so I can say that, but you know, we have the balloons and the popcorn machine and, you know, everything going. But we do have a great group of people and I think you've been to enough of our meetings Terry and Lynn that you see our back-to-school meeting, you see our Christmas parties, you see, you know, we try to do all those things along the line to keep people interested, because we like our people and you put a lot of time and effort into them, not to mention money into them. So you wanna keep them and driver retention is huge for us. So we just keep trying to plug away, we put out, any driver or employee that brings in another driver, that's, that's a bonus for you as well, it's a signing bonus for them, but it's a bonus for our current employee as well. So it's, because a lot of times it's who you know. And so that's what we're trying to go with, you know, trying, slowly, we're trying, so. But it's a work in progress, I mean, I think if you go in any town, you will see a big bus with a big sign that says, now hire it. Well, and I probably notice buses more than the normal people, but you do see them every town I go into. And being in Moston, the one thing I should mention, and we just did it, we're doing it again, is that this week, where we're driving from here to Moston and they're bringing it, or leaving, or with the Moston. So this week, what we try to do is, this has kinda been a benefit that we have Moston, which is in the Nacusa zone as far as athletics and that type of, we can bring a driver from Nacu, or from Moston, bring them up here to bring a group up and then they'll drive a route in Nacusa. So we are trying to flip-flop people as much as we can, like, hey, if we can save a driver here, let's grab one from here. We did it last week and we're doing it again this week, so we're trying everything and the gal Steph, who was doing our scheduling, that's amazing, she doesn't have gray hair yet, but she's too young to have gray hair, but she's doing a phenomenal job, so it's, it's coming.
Under tough circumstances and like Lynn said, the cost of buses being what they are and, you know, one thing that's come up that I just, it hurts me to even ask, because I know it's a, it's a hard question, but some stakeholders have indicated, you know, why are we still carrying two, two bus routes, is that an added cost to our district?
Are we carrying what?
We're two, we're having two.
Two bus routes.
Oh, no, you're actually saving. You'd be adding routes on if you just did single runs, because you'd need more buses. This way we're using a bus twice, so that we are, we don't need half as many. It, we have, we've done it for years and years and years, you'd be adding, how many buses do you think you'd be adding?
Probably at least four, if not more.
If you went to single runs? Because you'd, you'd run out of time, you know, with your staggered time, we can use that bus twice. So you, it legitimately is a really big cost saver.
It is, and that's something that, you know, we need to be able to better explain to some of our stakeholders when we're talking about some of them.
We can put something together for you to show you what the difference would be.
You know, that, it might be helpful, but again, I, I don't, we don't get to see it too often. It's a hard question to answer and I don't know if I phrased that question well enough. But it just has been mentioned, you know, why do we run two routes a day? And, you know, we're talking about saving money and, you know, I, Lynn had expressed to us in the past that, you know, that there would be more costs in buses. I think that's where I got it from Lynn, or maybe.
Yeah, you're right, no.
Or maybe it's from our last meeting, I don't know, but I know that it's something that, those additional buses are very expensive.
Well, I'm sure you've heard the same thing I've heard where, well, how come the bus is only half full? Well, okay, we can certainly put your little kiddo on there for two and a half hours, that's not a problem. It will be a problem, but you know, that's why we do it half full, because we wanna make sure that those kiddos are only on board for the most, an hour and forty minutes.
Yeah, you have some getting out, what's yours, who's at five thirty?
The bus, the bus leaves at five thirty. My first pickup is right around there.
But you know, that's a good point though Brian, because if we could get something in writing to explain it to folks in layman's terms, great. Better communication, I agree.
Because we hear it too.
The more, the more we're pressed about money and the more we're pressing others about money, it's becoming one of those things that I face more in the talks of recent, you know, when we're talking about dollars.
And we want you to explain it to folks, so I think that's a very valid point.
And when you, when you say that there's two routes, yes, they run double, but it's not, you're not getting billed two full route charges for that bus. You're getting charged one route rate and then it's, we call it a double run, it was a thirty, thirty dollars a day versus a one whole additional route. So ones that we can double, I don't think we have any singles, one, one, single one. They're all being doubled and utilized, we're trying to keep these buses just moving so that we don't have to add another route on there. Because one, we don't have the drivers, two, that's gonna cost you more money. So as much as, you know, this is a business for us, we're gonna run it the most efficiently we possibly can. Because the more efficiently we run it, the more efficiently I'm paying our drivers and every, my payroll is more efficient. So it's, we do everything to try to minimize how many buses we have to have out there. So you just, you can't have, you know, there's seventy-two passengers, but I'm sorry, you're not gonna put three high school students three to a seat on a school bus, you're not going to. We tried that for an athletic trip where three seats had three to a seat and that didn't go over really well. So you can tell, because it's uncomfortable, it's not, you know, so you do have to keep that in mind too, how many you're gonna put on there, so.
And I think I just can say for the Board of Occasion, I wanna just thank your drivers personally for what they do for us and our children and the relationships they build. I see tired eyes there and I know that you're one of those that give back to our children, you, you all do, so. We thank you for that and the interactions you have daily with our, with our office personnel. Those are things that trickle back and, you know, that's, that's, it's good, it's good information that you, it's good that you have that kind of working relationship. And that, you know, it's something we always try to, like, you know, be into those admin meetings if that can be helpful for you guys for us to understand what we could do different, for you guys to understand us, that's great, you know, the more information each of us have, the better job we can do.
That last admin was perfect, I mean, it was, if you would've done that sooner, but that was perfect. Yeah, right, Don Thomas is gonna come and go, that's right.
So if you're looking for a bus driving job, Safeway is the place to go.
That's right.
I don't see your application.
Well, I've got a few years left to do this work and then I'm coming there.
We'll, we'll hire them all.
Not yet, this is key.
We can hire them all, which, what kind of rate would you get?
It's only a couple, you know, a couple hours morning and night.
No, no.
You'd love it in January or March when we have the snowfall.
Oh, I've been there. Thank you guys.
Thank you guys, any other questions guys, what do you?
No, thank you guys.
Thanks for being here.
Alright, thank you, I'll put something together and Ryan will see you guys in a minute.
Thank you very much for taking the time. Is there any other information about that share or anything that you?
No, that's it, that was my update, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
At this time, I believe we can move to, Lynn, I'll put it back with regards to, we're gonna move it, we're gonna move the technology update up, up ahead of any other board work, we're gonna go up to first, so.
Great, yep, so like I said last month, we talked about our post-mortem maybe, meeting and we thought it would be a good idea to update the board on what our roadmap looks like. So I've invited Josh and Ryan from Heartland and we have Eric and Sonata from our technology department. So Josh, you're gonna take the lead?
I will, yeah. Thanks for having us.
Oh, can we hold on for just a second?
I'm sorry.
Well, so this is, yeah, just, this is Anita who we had talked about coming to talk about our four, the collaboration.
Oh, that's right, welcome Anita.
Is she in a hurry to go, because we haven't gotten to it, oh, okay.
Yeah, she's going with Ms. Koutsour, so.
Okay.
She's my rad.
So we haven't gotten to it, but do you wanna take two seconds and just?
Well, so that's where we were, was that, the work that we had talked about with the Sustainable Work Group, so. You wanna talk a little bit about what you've been doing?
Okay, so, so, so far, the Sustainable Working Group, we have focused on kind of making a blueprint on Southwood County to improve our district. Not only educationally, but how are we going to include more people ethnically, eth- ethnically, yeah? And how are we gonna involve everyone, not just like old welfare, new wealth or that kinda thing? Yeah.
Thank you, this is, this is in support of the operational expectation we're looking at tonight.
The results policy.
Results policy, sorry. And, and we asked Mr. Johnson to bring somebody, just to kinda tell a little bit about, what, what kinda things have you done to, to work on this stuff, on bringing those things together?
So far, we've had meetings, we had a three-day-long, well, okay, it was broken up into chunks, but it spanned over three days. And we talked about how is a community, how is it portrayed in a good light, how is it portrayed in a bad light? What can we approve, how do you see a sustainable community, if you're just thinking like a blank sheet of paper, what is a sustainable community? And how can we essentially make a blueprint to span over not only our community, but other communities, because we're going to be an example.
True, what, what brought about your interest in being involved in this startup program?
I, first, I wanted to see how it kinda works. But as I've been involved in it, I just like seeing how it functions and that's what fascinates me, because this is going to lead to all different kinds of opportunities for different kinds of people and that, that is what I love.
Wow, you might be developing your future career here. I like your excitement and it shows through. I appreciate that. Mr. Travelski or Mr. Shmatt, any questions?
No.
We appreciate your time, have you been waiting this whole time?
No.
No, we were just doing a conference call for the Sustainable Work.
Okay, well, thank you for being here and did you get across, I don't wanna rush you out here, but if you're in a hurry, I wanna let you get going. Is there any more information you wanted to cover? You're good? Well, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work and maybe, are you gonna, what year in school are you?
I'm a junior.
So you're gonna come back next year and tell us? A little more, a little bit, a little more detail? Okay, okay, thank you very much and have a great summer and good luck, okay?
Thanks Anita.
Thank you gentlemen.
No problem.
Sorry Josh.
No problem. So just real quick intro, so I'm Josh Drake, I'm account manager for Heartland Business Systems. I've actually had the privilege of, my fourteen years that I've been at Heartland, I've been the account manager for Nacusa School District for ten-plus years, so it's great to be back here again, I think this is either my fourth or fifth time presenting to the board, so thanks again for having us. With me is Ryan Beeman, Ryan is what I call the brains behind the operation here. Ryan is one of our engineering team leaders here. He's also the primary engineering resource responsible for the delivery of services from our organization to yours. And so we were asked here to provide kind of a technology strategy and a roadmap update for you, but I thought it would also be fun to maybe talk about IP addressing schemes and ten gig, either. Thank you for laughing, that was a joke.
Was that planted Lynn?
I was the only one paying attention.
We're still trying to say haven't seen.
How about explaining OneDrive?
So I thought it would be important, really what is a technology strategy? So as a group, we meet a couple times, so bi-quarterly meetings we have and we really try to define what our technology strategy is collectively, right, Heartland and, and the district. And for us, it's not just about the speeds and feeds and the computers and the devices, we really have to look from a classroom perspective, right? What from a curriculum side and professional development side is either driving change or forcing change. We look at the finance side of things, so it's not only about buying the technology, but also how do we sustain the technology? And then, of course, there's organizational achievement. And so we have to mash those things together in our opinions to create this technology strategy. But from a, from a high level, it's really about making sure that we're aligning the IT to meet the overall objectives of the district. The other thing that I thought would be very helpful is trying to explain how we view IT and make recommendations as it relates to IT. And so what I'm depicting here is a pyramid and we call this pyramid the IT stack. But rather than going through this and looking at it from an IT stack, I thought it would be more fun if we pretended as a group that we were building a house together, alright? And so why, why I think that'll be easier is that you see the bottom level of the pyramid where it says infrastructure, security, mobility. I like to look at that as if we were to build the foundation of our house, right? We would never wanna build our house on quicksand, right, we want that solid foundation. So if I put that in technology terms, what does that solid foundation consist of? Well, it consists of things like your switching infrastructure, your wireless access points and your wireless infrastructure, your UPS systems, security and firewall systems, et cetera, right? I, I view that as the, the foundation of our house, okay? So once the foundation is done, right, now what do we go from there? We wanna put in some studs and add some walls to the place, right? And we call that our service platform level. And so if, if we built the walls, right, inside those walls, that would be where our servers and storage sit. That's where our backup and our data and disaster recovery sit. That's where there's software that's designed to help us control and kind of allow or disallow users to go to certain places based on their identity, okay? So that's the walls and then after the walls are built, what do we wanna do? We wanna put a roof on it and we wanna live in it, right? And that's what I refer to as the application layer there, from a technology perspective. I kinda correlate that to classroom technology, so your audio/video needs, the devices that your teachers and students use, Chromebooks, right? And then in general, the applications that the districts use on a day-to-day basis just to function, okay? Any questions on how we kinda view the IT stack, hopefully that was a little helpful in, in layman's terms, if you will? So then, as a group, we got together and I know this is a really busy slide, so I apologize about that, but I wanted one slide to depict the current and future state and kinda summarize. but I wanted one slide to depict the current and future state and kinda summarize it. But as a group, we had to define kinda where we're at before, um, we know where we're going. And so we did that together, and the other thing we did was looked at our house. So we already have a house here, it's already built, right? We're just kind of at the point right now where we need to start making some improvements to our house. And so as a group, we prioritized, um, you know, in order, what, what type of priorities do we need to start making improvements to our house? Okay? And I don't know if you can really see it, but let's focus on, um, the walls or the service platform area. You can probably see on the far right-hand side in green, um, priority number one. And so let's pretend that we have some holes in our walls. Sanada got really mad and started punching some shoot, holes in the sheet rock, and we have to, we have to patch that now, right? And so priority one that we had is, uh, uh, overall priority would be, um, getting some backups and off-site DR. So we're all aware of some, some of the unfortunate downtime we experienced here. Thankfully, we were able to fully recover from that, so the technology technically did what it was supposed to, but some lessons learned in our post-mortem, mortem meeting was, hey, let's get our backups and, uh, DR strategy off-site. Why is that important? Well, you know, locally, if we ever had a tornado or a flooding or whatever series of event here, we still wanna have a mechanism to recover that data, so that when it is time to kinda regroup, we have your data there and the, and the, uh, district can operate. Uh, priority number two that we recognized as a group is, um, server operating system upgrades. Um, you have a lot of servers here in the district, and the operating systems range from 2003 to 2016, right? Um, why that's important is, one, we need an easier way to manage your environment for the devices that your staff and students use. So if we have a common platform, it'll make it easier for the IT department to manage those devices that affect the classroom. Make sense? The other thing that, uh, is very important in that is we really wanna improve the security posture within your, within your data center. What I mean by that is some of that older operating system software, like 2003, the manufacturers don't support those versions any longer, which means that they're not, they're not creating security patches for that software, and we don't wanna have any vulnerabilities in the environment for bad things to happen. Uh, and then lastly, in the, in the upgrades, we can then decommission some legacy hardware that you have here. So there's a lot of physical servers, maybe some storage devices that are, that are powered up and running. Well, after this upgrade, we can, we can shut those servers down, take them out, and there's going to be a cost savings on the amount of heating, cooling, and power and space that we're going to need after that upgrade. Um, I'm just gonna jump ahead unless there's any questions so far. Keep going. Alright, so, um, priority number three, this is going to take us to the top left-hand side. Um, this is more on the foundational level. Priority number three we identified as a group is wireless upgrades. And, uh, so our current wireless in the environment today was purchased in 2011 and 2012. It has served the district very, very well. We've had it in there for eight years now, right? A typical replacement strategy for wireless technology is about three to five years, okay? So it's treated us very well at this point. But we've now come to a point where the access points that are in this environment are no longer supported by the manufacturer. And then secondarily, the devices that the district is buying, like new laptops and Chromebooks that are getting in the hands of teachers and students, are being capped a little bit, uh, by performance, because the technology inside of these devices here that the teachers and students have actually have more capabilities than your current access points can handle. Okay, so that's another driving factor as to why that's priority number three. Um, one thing about the, the wireless, um, is those are E-rate eligible items on the, on the wireless upgrades as well. Um, after the wireless, um, continuing on on the foundational pieces, um, priority number four is doing some switching infrastructure upgrades. Again, the major, um, upgrade there was in 2011 and 2012 with the wireless project that we did. But why switches are important is very simple. The switches are what power all of your access points in your environment. It's what controls all your video surveillance cameras in your environment. It does all your door access control, your phone system, so you can see how important the switching infrastructure is to, um, really, really critical systems within the environment. And so, um, we've made some minor upgrades since 2011, 2012 to the system, but your environment today has about fifty switches total across the, across the district. And of those fifty, there's twenty of those switches that are fully supported and, and are working well. But there's thirty of those fifty that are, um, probably need to be on the roadmap for replacement, okay? So either that's the manufacturer saying, hey, they're becoming end of support, or there's just certain features within those switches that don't support where the district is going. In the same breath, we have an opportunity to consolidate some of those switches, right? To reduce the number of switches you have. Why is that? Again, we're dependent more and more on the wireless technology here, and we're not replacing computer labs with more computers, we're replacing them with wireless devices. So we can literally collapse the amount of switches we have, which will be some cost savings there as well. Um, priority five, I'm playing a little hopscotch on you, bottom right-hand corner, okay? Um, this is probably going to get back to what Mr. Grill was talking about, and there's some phone system upgrades that, um, we've identified that need to be done. Um, so the phone system was purchased in 2013, and, um, you know, it's a solid investment. It's doing a lot of things for the district. Um, you know, when what 911 is dialed, it, it alerts and notifies and tells us where that, that call is coming from, so we can react accordingly. But it also, um, helps us control the paging system. So there's certain upgrades that, um, we wanna do to continually improve to make sure that those systems and, uh, services are, are working the way they should be. And the last, uh, priority, um, identified is priority number six, bottom left-hand side of the screen, um, making some firewall and content filtering upgrades. Now, why are firewall upgrades important is year after year, our bandwidth requirements are continually improving. Again, right, that's great, because we have more devices, more kids are using these devices, which is increasing the need for more bandwidth, and we need a firewall to support that. The other thing we wanna be ready for is if and when the district is, uh, going to offer, um, students to take district-owned devices home, we want them to be filtered the same way at home as they are in the district, to protect them from, you know, some internet safety-type things, right? And then on top, I, there's the application level here, I mean, that's a continual improvement plan. There's no, like, that never stops, right? We're always talking about what, what does the classroom need? That helps drive what we need from the services platform and the foundational, foundational level. And so I know I said a lot in a very short period of time, so I'm gonna pause there, um, just to open it up for questions. If there are no questions on that, I do, so we talked about some next steps. So what we identified as a group is, um...
We get, I think we had a...
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead, Lynn.
Um, no specific questions. There's a lot of, you know, information there, and I'm certain that it has worked out that there'll be additional questions as we proceed through those items. But no, no questions on what you presented, no.
Excellent. So as a group, again, we kinda prioritize these, and in the next step, we, um, we would like to, you know, create some, some budget estimates around those prioritized items, and then collectively, again, as a group, start establishing more of an execution strategy and defining those timelines further to execute on those. And last of all, again, um, as I mentioned, been, uh, you know, account manager for the, for the district for over ten years, we certainly appreciate your partnership as well, and thanks for having us.
So, can I ask a quick question? So a number of those items fell, will fall under E-rate, is there, is the greatest chunk of that E-rateable?
Last time we got some, um, money for the, um, switches, we got about, I think, hundred eighty thousand for the E-rate. But they don't, um, they, they never really give you a concrete number, you know, how much you're gonna get. And then this one is a category two, and supposedly each five years that you deplete the money for your district, and then they're supposedly filter it. But with the budget, um, from state and as well as the, um, the changes of the policy of the E-rate, and just sometimes it's just hard to say how much money you actually get. It would be nice that, you know, you, yeah, you get about the same amount of money. But again, you know, some of this stuff, even if it's not E-ratable, you know, like, like our phone service, I mean, currently, we have about a hundred and seventy-five phones, I think, in the district. And I just got a, um, notification from Solaris, which is a provider, and I think the average line for each phone is about twenty-five dollars. So if you do some simple math, you know, we, we have a hundred and seventy-five times twenty-five dollars. You talk about three to four thousand dollars a month, just for the phone services. So in a year, it could be like fifty, sixty thousand dollars. But using, but because we, we use our phone system, we basically just pay for twenty-five to thirty lines. So we save a lot of money just from there to put it into a phone system in which, not just for talking, you have all that voicemail and all the other functions that leave us to be kind of creating a level of communication to our liking.
So the majority of it is, is E-ratable, but then we also have grants that we can look at. We have zero-based funding we could look at. So we've already put some of this into place already.
I heard that.
Okay. Um, we've outsourced, uh, we're going to be outsourcing our power school. Right now, it's in-house, and we're gonna be outsourcing that to the cloud. Um, I've also talked to Skyward, I really haven't updated you guys with this yet, but Skyward is a turnkey as well.
Awesome.
So, um, that'll be the next item. Go ahead, Eric.
I just want you guys to realize that this is like the broad view.
Yes.
This is not like next week, we need a check. This is like a five-year plan. So all this information, you know, you're getting a lot of switches and firewall and phones and all that. It's nibbling off little pieces per year that, that completes that whole puzzle.
That's exactly right. But we wanted to give you the roadmap that we're thinking about things that are going on down the road.
That's very much appreciated, cause I think that is exactly what we need to know.
If you could share this presentation with us, that'd be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, I can share it. And then, um, just to answer your question to Mr. Whitmore, all of the things in blue, I'm not an E-rate consultant, but all of the items in blue, the majority of them are E-rate eligible items, right? And, um, how E-rate typically works is that, um, you can take your student count and times that by a hundred and fifty dollars per student, okay? That's your total five-year sum that they're allowing, and then it's based on your free and reduced count after that.
Which changes every year, so.
Yeah.
Awesome.
That money comes from state or from?
Federal.
Federal.
Yeah, federal funding.
Actually, the consumers pay for that. Because if you look at the bill, then you have the universal fee on your phone bill, so that they collect it from the consumers, and then they redistribute it. And then one thing I wanna more mention is, we also, um, the state also do the teach money.
Yeah.
That, you know, help out part of it. E-rate, as, as Josh mentioned, that, you know, it's only go by, I think, this one's rate, and we got about seventy percent back if we don't get other fundings for that.
But every project we look at, we look to see if it's E-ratable, and then how much is not E-ratable, and we turn every rock to see where we can find the money then. Uh, most of the things that we've done was purchased through the, um, technology budget. So, I mean, we plan for these little projects every year, because we know that it's gonna happen. Because the minute you stop spending on technology, you come to a standstill.
It's really become the lever of most of the operations that the district has, right?
Yes. So we would just wanted to give you an update.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna say when, whenever there's a, a network issue, you guys are on top of it to fix it right away. Especially a couple months ago when we were down. I mean, it could've been so much longer, so I just appreciate your guys' time and, and work on getting on top of those things, so.
Yeah, that, that turned, look at the good that's come from that.
Yeah.
Yeah, and every, I mean, all four of these guys worked all weekend around the clock on that, so.
Well, throw Keith in the mix, too. Good shit, that play going on.
That was heartening, though. I mean, it was impressive, the, that response was.
That's right, you're the one that let me in.
I was.
Oh, you were here all night.
Ryan was here all weekend.
Now it's coming together.
But that's, that's what a partnership is about, and I hope that would be something that you can expect from us all the time.
We appreciate it. So Lynn, thanks for getting this ball rolling and keeping it moving.
We all did it, so.
Yeah, and I'll share the result of your view, if you wouldn't mind sharing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, great.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Thanks for coming.
Have a good night, Sanada.
Yeah.
Safe travels back, guys.
Thank you.
Eric, thank you.
Where do you wanna go?
Yeah, you're up, right.
Uh?
Lunch update.
Yes. Okay, I was waiting. So, um, every year, I bring this to the board for, um, approval. We look at the breakfast and lunch prices, uh, current, and then we have proposed prices for breakfast and lunch. Um, this is really dictated by the state. It used to be where it, it, um, it was really at, at the district's leisure on how much they wanted to raise prices, but now it's really dictated by the state. You have a huge formula that you have to, uh, complete a spreadsheet with many, many tabs, which is ridiculous, but that's the school nutrition department for you. Um, so you, you complete this worksheet, and in the end, it tells you how much you're allowed to raise prices. Um, unfortunately, uh, we have to raise prices by ten cents, um, for, for lunch. So breakfast prices would remain the same. Um, the, the K-three would be from two seventy to two eighty. Um, four through eight, two ninety to three dollars. Nine twelve, three ten to three twenty. The adults, three seventy-five to three eighty-five, as lo- and, as well as the elderly. So, um, I'm recommending approval of the nineteen-twenty school lunch prices, reflecting a ten-cent increase over the prior year price. Breakfast prices would remain the same.
Calling for a motion.
So...
Second.
We have a motion and a second on paper, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you, Lynn. Was there anything else, Lynn, that you wanted to touch upon? Thank you. That brings us to policy governance, R4, collaborative and responsible citizens. We discussed this last week, Thursday, and, you know, we indicated last week during our discussion on Thursday that this, this results policy, three years ago, was a very difficult topic. It was one that we struggled to address and one that we, there were many challenges. And the review this, in this last year, this, this information and this, these processes that this results policy covers are commonplace and, and things that we hear of in action. And it made for a much, a much easier discussion. There are indeed many highlights that we can draw from this. Um, basically, I should, you know, the, this results policy, um, is regarding collaborative and responsible citizens. And Carrie, if you just wanna read the interpretation of that.
I'd be happy, happy to. All students are productive and collaborative contributors in the workplace and in society.
Thank you.
And you know what? Could I just ask Keith to put into context the, what Anita shared?
Sure.
And that could help summarize the policy.
Sure, well, I mean, the, kinda the neat part about what, you know, what she's involved in, um, is collaboration with a, a variety of people from the community, from the greater Southwood County area, but then also collaborating with facilitators from, uh, you know, at the national level, and having discussions around, um, funding sources for different projects and things of that sort, so that it, it really is a... so that it really is an example of a collab, she's collaborating and involved in collaboration both at a local level and at a national level. It is something that she's interested in as a career, that community development work, you know, as Brian had pointed out. But that really is almost the definition of this result policy with the collaborative, responsible citizens and members of our community.
So they did some summer work, right, before school started? Was she part of?
No, no, this is, this started in April. So this was, it began in April. It was April 25th, 26th, 27th. We had, we're both part of the group, and it was half, it was the evening of the 25th, a full day 26th, and then the morning of the Saturday, the 27th. So she moved from that to prom. But, and so it's a quick, so the idea is this is a quick group. It meets, met in April. We've been getting email updates from the facilitators. Tonight, we had a video conference. We'll get another round of updates. And then we have another video conference in June, June 2nd, I think. And then the idea is this blueprint will roll out to the community, so, yeah, so it's a fast-moving process.
Cool. Thank you. Any questions for any board members, any comments on processes? One thing that we did in looking at this results policy, there are several questions on here that are kind of repeat themselves or ask for the same information. So we, you know, Diana, if you could add this to the list of policies that we need to review, the language. I think we got a list going here, so the policies committee will be busy. But I want to congratulate administration, teachers, the special education teachers, you know, the office personnel. Every single person in our district has had a hand in creating, making this policy work. So, and Mr. Grill, you as well. So with that in mind, I'd like to call for a motion to approve our four collaborative and responsible citizens.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Is there any questions, guys? I didn't, were you here all along? Is there anything that you're here to talk about that I forgot about or anything like that? Okay.
The crowds are moving back in.
The crowds are moving back in. I love it. I love it. And certainly, if there are, you know, if there was things that I can go over more in detail, but thank you for being here. The next thing that we have is the GP4 Board Job Description. And essentially, this goes over...
Can we read that?
Yep.
"The board's job includes representation of the district's owners, advocacy for students, responsible stewardship, and district leadership through determining and demanding excellent performance."
Thank you. This, it outlines the responsibilities for each individual. This was sent to all of the board members, and there were no findings or conclusions of any items that weren't in line with this. I call for a motion to approve GP4 Board Job Description.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you. Going ahead of myself here. Okay, consent agenda. For donations, Mr. Pidolski, would you mind?
So we have a donation from Jean Michaels for the Reeves Award winners. A saxophone and case from Vicky Humphrey and family were also donated. And then backpack for kids, $90 from Sacred Heart Collections, and $130 from Bethlehem Lutheran Church. So thank you to those donors.
Thank you, Cody. Any other items on the consent agenda that...
Nope.
Very good. Board President calls for a motion to approve consent agenda as presented.
I'll move that motion. Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Future agenda items, Board Workshop, June 13th, 2019. Regular meeting, June 18th, 2019. Ms. Martinson is also going to be working to schedule a meeting during the last week of May to work on completing work surrounding district administrator evaluation. We need to have two meetings. The first, the discussion, then the approval, and then actually three with the final discussion. We may be able to combine that last one. But we did a much better job following through with policy governance this year, and this process will be much easier than it has in the past. And we must thank Ms. Martinson for your organization. It is fantastic. We appreciate that.
With your help.
You keep us in line. Showcasing schools and student learning, adowment from recipient. Operations expectations on the table for next month, global operations expectation, financial administration, facilities management. Governance policy, GP2 governance commitment. Current year budget revision and budget amendments, annual review of other post-employment benefits, and ATR end-of-semester review. This is going to be a busy month. We have graduation coming up on June 2nd. A lot to be excited about. We had our scholarship and awards night last week.
Reeves tomorrow night.
Reeves tomorrow night. It's to be congratulated to this class that they accumulated over, I believe, $242,000 in...
$357,000.
$357,000.
$7,000.
$357,000 in scholarship and awards, the highest amount for a class in our history, if that's correct.
That we can determine.
That we know. And, you know, we want to congratulate the efforts of those students, and there are other monies out there available. Their students need to know these monies are out there, and that their time and effort in pursuing these scholarships and awards is to be rewarded. So, and many thanks to the staff that assisted with that presentation. And this week, we also have the Reeves Award, which is Wednesday evening.
Yep, tomorrow.
At 6:00 PM. Concert tonight at, about five minutes ago?
Seven o'clock it started.
Okay.
Seven o'clock, one, the middle school started eight o'clock roughly, is when the, is when the high school.
Okay, I mean, like, no. Good. Anything else that we need to celebrate or recognize?
Project search graduation as well will be next.
Very good.
And then you've all gotten invites for the, it was Academy graduation?
Nacusa Academy.
'Cause that's when. You should make sure that's on your calendar.
I need to be reminded, I mean, and God. So we want to thank everybody for their time.
I got one more thing to add.
Very good.
Yeah, the board and the community would like to offer our prayers for Madison Conrad, who passed away not too long ago, and then also to her graduating class, and Renee, I refer donating over 100 flowers for that funeral and for her prior to her birthday. So just wanted to say our prayers for the board and the community and the district are with that class and that family, so.
Thank you, Cody.
And the board is sending flowers too, so, yeah. Sad news. So Tuesday the 4th is Nacusa Academy graduation. Very good. Thank you. And then I had one last thing. What time is the Reeves tomorrow night? 5:30 or 6:00? We're hearing two different.
The, well, the dinner, there will be the dinner at 5:30, and then at roughly 6:15 or so will be when we start the...
So we're gonna start in the commons, then move to the...
No, this is all at the community center.
Oh, it's all at the community center. Very good. And then it was mentioned tonight by Mrs. Keltzer that our FBLA is going to the National Leadership Conference in Texas, San Antonio. Just wanted you to know that that's happening, June 29th through July 3rd. So it's on your radar. It's been approved by the administrative team.
Very good. At this time, I call for a consideration of motion to adjourn into closed session pursuant to Section 19.851(c) of the Wisconsin statutes, statute. Consider employment promotion or compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility specifically for a conference with an employee to discuss employee contract and status. Calling for a motion.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a first and a second. We'll call vote piece.
Page man says yes. Cody Pidolski, yes.
Yes. Thank you, everybody, for your...